That's a county.
Oh, that's right. It is a county parking deck. Yeah. I do have some questions for you. Y'all can't steal my questions either.
I'm not stealing your questions. I promised.
I don't ask very intelligent questions, you know.
Am I right?
Right? Right, Will?
I'm with you. It's better to be honest. What does the grandfather tell you? Keep your mouth shut when people think you're...
Move all down. Yeah, I love it. That is one of my favorites. Nathan? Mr. Ingram? I cannot wait to hear your stories. You must have... You must have some great stories.
That's right.
I don't need to hear them right now.
I'm excited about it.
I said, "I can't... I can't wait to hear your stories."
That's 500 words for throwing it, 500 words for missing.
The, uh, the, uh, orchid guy? Yeah. Oh, my goodness.
Oh, really?
Wow.
That was the one he wanted to know about anyway.
Fifth year in a row. Thank you. Did you bring me one? Lion Coke? And why are you... Do you want me to run and get it?
No.
I do when I'm really tired and my eyes feel like they're not gonna stay. Very rarely. Steven, you know that about me. You know so much about me.
You know a lot about me today.
Right. Nobody but us is stopping us. I don't think. Can you hear that feeling? A lot of it. That was my understanding because we can't make this out. No, that, in fact, that's a new part, I thought.
Is Nick here tonight? Is Nick coming?
Uh, he's sitting there.
He's coming? He's coming?
Uh, I knew it.
He still comes.
Okay.
Good evening. Welcome, everyone. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag and remain standing at the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wilson?
Heavenly fathers, we gather tonight. We ask your blessings on each person here. We ask you for the wisdom that we can make decisions that will be the best for all concerned. We ask your blessings on all those who came out to hear the workings of the city of Canton, and we thank you most of all for our beautiful city. In your name we pray. Amen.
It's called Order, our July fifteenth council meeting. This time I have a consideration to approve the agenda. Do we have any revisions, changes? Mr. Peppers?
We do have an executive session for real estate, and I do expect that we will come out and take action following that executive session.
Okay. Any other changes or a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda with an executive session for real estate.
A second. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion. We do have some guests and visitors tonight, beginning with Chief Merrifield, who has some life-saving award for us tonight, so... Always exciting, so...
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So, uh, I once heard police work was hours of boredom interrupted by moments of sheer terror. So, on June second at three thirty in the morning, our officers, uh, just about any jurisdiction you're at, about three thirty and four, things are starting to slow down. You're getting close to the end of your shift. You're trying to do your paperwork from the night before, and you're just kind of easing into getting ready to be off. But on this night, on this morning at three thirty, our officers were dispatched to a, uh, a house fire. What they found when they got on the scene was it was a neighborhood fire. There were multiple houses on fire, and Sergeant Lilly, who is not with us tonight, Officer Michael Kaplan, Officer Jesse Lee, and Officer Dominique Marotta arrived on the scene and then began banging on doors, going into houses to help people get out. We actually had people that had went out their back doors but were trapped inside the fenced areas of their yard, so the officers had to help lift them and carry them over fences. And our officers went into one house, and there was a lady in there that they had to actually physically pick up and help carry her out. All this while several houses are on fire around them. When I got notified of it and I, I contacted from the, the comfort of my bed and I notified Sergeant Lilly, or called Sergeant Lilly, and his words to me were, "When we got on the scene, it was utter chaos here." We could see the fire when we were in route. We could see the fire for miles. But these officers arrived on the scene, did not hesitate, went inside of burning houses, went into backyards where houses were starting to collapse from fire, and assisted people and pets of getting outside of those houses. And I also want to say, I saw Chi, our fire chief, Chief Prather is here tonight, and of course, his people arrived on the scene and assisted, and once we were able to do all we could do, his people took over and did a, did an incredible job out there. And I think it speaks volumes that you can have that many houses and that kind of chaos and not have injury and not have death. I think it speaks volumes for our officers and our firefighters that were involved in that. I know that at least one of the residents is here tonight. She wanted to be a, be here for this, and we have had numerous phone calls and emails from other residents that wanted to do something for the officers that assisted them that night. In, in closing, I will say that when Lieutenant Campbell wrote up the recommendation for this life-saving award, he ended it with this sentence. "These officers acted without concern for their own safety or well-being, without delay to protect those in danger by assisting in their safe removal from the area." For that, these officers will be receiving the Canton Police Department Life Saving Award, and I congratulate and thank all of them for their bravery. These are the good times to be police chief. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chief. And, uh, thank you Sergeant Lilly, Officers Kaplan, Lee, and Marotta. You represent the best of our city, and we're very proud of you and appreciate your service and and certainly, uh, what you did on that evening or early morning. Also, I want to thank Chief Prather and his team for their excellent work. I also got a call in early morning hours from, from Chief Prather giving me an update. It's not a call you wanna, it's not a name you wanna see on your phone in the middle of the night, but I certainly appreciated the update and always appreciate what he is and his team does. So, that's a great partnership and, and we appreciate their great work, so... Thank you all. Next, I have a proclamation to present. And the City of Canton Proclamation Number Two Zero Two One Zero Seven One Five, Young Biz Kid Day. Whereas there is a need for avenues whereby youth can learn how to become youth entrepreneurs, and whereas young business owners thrive and flourish under the encouragement and support of their local community, and whereas entrepreneurship can be an avenue to teach financial literacy to youth by helping them to make money, manage money, and save money, and whereas youth entrepreneur, Zania Nicola, founder and owner of Alande Beauty, is a catalyst to bring entrepreneurship opportunities to the youth of the city of Canton, and whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize the tremendous impact that all young entrepreneurs have on the city of Canton through their entrepreneurship, leadership, philanthropy, volunteership, and community service, and whereas our city's youth will see other young people achieving greatness and serving the community through entrepreneurship, and in turn, they will want to do great things as well. Now, therefore, I, Bill Grant, Mayor of the City of Canton, do hereby proclaim the third Saturday of July is Young Biz Kid Day to empower all the young entrepreneurs of Canton. I'm not sure, I don't think Ms. Nicola, uh, could be here tonight, but is there someone here to, to accept the proclamation? If not, we'll make sure she gets this, and, uh, it's for all of our young entrepreneurs in the city, so we're proud of them. And one other guest, uh, some guests tonight, and, uh, it's, um, from the county. We have County Manager Jeff Morton and Administrative Services Agency Director Stacy Williams here to give us an update on the county parking deck project. I do want to interrupt that, uh, this is not a city project, uh, and we have no involvement in it, but we do appreciate the port and update and what's, what's happening because, because the deck is in our downtown area. Mr. Morton, we appreciate the update and, uh, we're, we're glad to have you here with us tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, like I say, we're here on a friendly visit. We're not here to ask for anything or anything like that.
We always appreciate that.
Here to give you an update on a project that, like you say, is gonna be in your backyard right in downtown Canton. So, I will turn it over now to, uh, Stacy Williams, our Administrative Services Agency Director, with, uh, some more details. We've got a quick PowerPoint presentation for you so you can get a good visual of what's gonna be going on.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us this evening. Very quickly, this won't take just a little bit of your time. As you can see in our first slide, this is a current aerial of the way the, uh, the Justice Center and the Historic Courthouse and our current parking deck. That's the way it looks today. That's a rendering of the parking deck setting in behind, um, the Historic Courthouse, and you can see there in the middle right portion, you see a white, looks like almost an L. That is gonna be a covered walkway that is gonna walk up to a security pavilion. I'll show you a slide in that in just a moment. It is seven stories high, um, gonna be about, says five hundred and fifty spaces. We just made a design change, moving some conditioned space from the parking deck into the annex, which is gonna add about thirty-six more parking spaces, so it's gonna be a total of about five hundred and eighty-six spaces. We're gonna put in about six electric car charging stations. You can see the yellow arrow. That is gonna be the entrance off of North Street. And then again, you see the covered parking deck and, uh, the security pavilion. This slide here, uh, lets me explain to you. So, you're gonna come in off of North Street there to the left part. It's fourteen foot high, so there won't be any problems with fire engines getting in and out, um, even a, a Greyhound bus. Up in that, uh, we'll call it the upper left corner, that'd be plenty of turning radius for a fire engine or for a bus to come in there. That's currently a retaining wall. We have made a change with that as well after, uh, speaking with, uh, Mr. Graves from, from the cemetery. We're gonna tear that down and just make them a driveway entrance into the cemetery there for them. So, that wall's coming down. It kind of helped our project and certainly something that they asked us to do, and we had no problem doing for them whatsoever, so... Uh, and then the long driveway there in front of the, uh, Arts Center, and then you see the fifteen spaces on the outside of the parking deck there on the back. There's fifteen spaces as well right there for Arts Council, whoever. This will be a, a public parking area twenty-four seven. It will be open to the public continuously. Here is a, a color rendering. Um, the upper one is facing it from North Street. Of course, the historic, Historic Courthouse will be kind of in the middle, so you won't see all this from Main Street, basically the right side and the left side. Uh, the bottom, um, picture is looking at it from, uh, from the Justice Center, looking at it from the east. Again, the top is looking at it from the cemetery, so very, the very back of the parking deck, and then the bottom is looking at it from the vacant lot there behind, uh, Mr. Flint's building from the west. Here's a good picture of the security pavilion. You see it, uh, coming off of the front of the Justice Center, and then you can see a little bit of the covered walkway going to the, um, the elevator shaft, which is that highest corner. About that white car in the very back, if you were to look directly right, that's where you'll be able to see a portion of, um, the Arts Council. You will be able to see it from Main Street. There'll be some shrubbery in the walkway, but it is somewhat visible still from, um, North Street. Here's another aerial ground level of the security pavilion. That security pavilion has three lanes to get in and out, scanning lanes, much like in an airport, and then a, a separate, um, employee, uh, card, what they call card access, getting into as well. That is something that the Sheriff's Office thought would very much enhance the security of that building having, because once the annex is built, this will be the only way into the building from, for the public. It's from this access once the annex is built. And then our final, uh, slide is from, uh, actually the square, the park there, looking over the corner of the Historic Courthouse. There again, at the Plaza Rotary Park, of course, will stay intact. Everything will be the same shrubbery. It'll look very much, it'd just have a walkway, that security pavilion, and then a parking deck in the back. It is seventy, was seventy-two and a half foot high. Uh, the change that we made, um, with that conditioned space actually brought that down to sixty-eight and a half. So, it was actually, in my opinion, a very good move for us to kind of do some, some redesigning. So, you know, in our opinion, having five hundred and eighty-six parking places basically across the street from downtown to the square in Canton will be a good thing, so, um, that's all I have for tonight. Do you have any questions? Be glad to answer any questions you might have, and if I can't answer them, uh, my senior construction, uh, manager from Cherokee County is with us, Alan Kronberger. He'll be the onsite project manager, uh, there as well. He might can help answer any questions you might have as well.
Questions for, for, for Council? Again, I want to stress that the city is, is not involved in this project, but we do appreciate the opportunity to have questions and input. I think the county and everyone knows here, we have a new roadmap for the city. One of our eight tenants is enhancing the potential of downtown Canton. I would have some questions about how this, uh, the parking deck may enhance the potential of downtown questions, but I'll turn it over to Council at this point for any questions. Ms. McGrue?
Hi, I'm Sandy McGrue. We haven't met. It's nice to see you and thank you so much for your update. I'm thrilled that you're going to have charging stations in for, um, people who come in and out of the city. By any chance, will there be restrooms in the parking deck?
I don't believe there is at this time. No.
And is there a roof on the parking deck?
There is. It's, it's, uh, well, the very top level doesn't. The six levels underneath it will be covered. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was wondering if there was a, a roof over the top level that could accommodate solar panels?
Not at this time. No.
Not at this time? Okay.
No, we haven't gone it that way.
And is the county, um, amenable to using, uh, native plant material and non-invasive species, uh, around the new parking deck?
Very good question. I would say at this time, we would probably be, yes, ma'am. Very much so.
Obviously, I'm the older hippie.
I understand. Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I appreciate that, and it's, it's very nice to see you, and thank you for the...
Yeah. He, uh, thank you, Alan. We will actually be following the landscape ordinance that the city has when we do this project.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I do have a follow-up question.
Mr. Tullman?
Again, thank you for coming out. We really appreciate it. I thought, I heard you say it would be available to the public. I wasn't sure if that was the entire parking deck or parts of it?
Nope. That's, that's all of it. All five hundred and eighty-six spaces will be open twenty-four seven.
And will there be a charge, an hourly or daily charge?
No, sir.
That's all great news. Thank you.
No swing arms, no tenants, no nothing, just in and out.
Thank you.
I, I know you're entering the deck from North Street, um, and you mentioned that there would be spaces provided for the, for the Arts Center. But is that, is the deck going to, to block the entrance, North Street entrance to the Arts Center, or do you have to go through the deck to get to the Arts Center?
You, you do. Yes, sir. So... So, yes, you, you, to get to the Arts Center, um, you will have to go under or in through the, the deck there to the left and make that right-hand turn to go out to the Arts Center. Until the annex is built, you, you still will be able to, to enter off of, um, North Street there behind the current Justice Center and come around, but once the annex built, that will not be a public access anymore. It'll be an access, but not to the public, so this will be the only way in and out. Yes, sir.
So, once the annex is built, that, that entrance would go away. Obviously, we've always had some ongoing concerns about the visibility of the Arts, Arts Center, uh, given its location, and also the Historic Cemetery, which I think is an asset to the, the city. But I think having to, to access Arts Center, I mean, it's gonna be even more hidden by the deck, um, but also the accessibility is gonna be certainly hindered by that. It'd be a concern that, that I have. But, uh, I think to have to go through the deck to get there is only gonna discourage more people from, from, from attending or, or visiting the Arts Center, but... Schmidt?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you guys consider wayfinding signs and signage to get to the Arts Center? To help people navigate to the Arts Center?
I, I don't see a problem with that at all. No, ma'am.
And then to walk to the Arts Center? You said there's a walkway in between. Will it be nice all the way to the Arts Center?
Yes, ma'am. You can see it there, so if, if you look just to the left of the Justice Center, you see a white line that's actually a covered walkway, and then you see a gray, that is a sidewalk going all the way to the Arts Center. Yes, ma'am, and it'll all be landscape, landscape. The reason the parking deck is as large as it, as it is, is we did a, uh, assessment. So, once the annex is, um, the second phase of the Justice Center, the annex is what we call it, is built, when you start talking about all the employees in two buildings, the Historic Courthouse, if they're holding court and everything, it takes about five hundred and fifty parking spaces is what our studies show. So, that's the reason it is the size that it is.
Could I just clarify also if we're gonna do wayfinding signs that they also include the Historic Cemetery? And, and then for, just, I know residents are watching, what's happening to the other parking deck? For clarification, the existing parking deck.
It will remain until we start construction on the annex, and when the annex, uh, construction start, it will be torn down because that's, that's where the annex is gonna sit, and it's a rectangle right where that parking deck is.
And I know, I know what residents are gonna say. What's the annex?
It's the phase two. It's, it's, um, a courthouse expansion. It's courtrooms.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, it, um, it's gonna be an inconvenience. There's no doubt about that. You know, small town, in the middle of the square. Construction's gonna take twelve to fourteen months. We expect to start that November. Please don't hold me to that, but that's kind of what we're looking at right now. We plan to award construction contract at our next meeting on Tuesday, so it'll be inconvenience, but I think once it's finished, you know, with five hundred and eighty-six spaces, it will help downtown. Very much so.
Yeah, let me, let me just add that we will work with, with your, uh, city manager, Mr. Peppers, you know, any wayfinding signs and all that.
Thank you.
And any conduits for, for tree lights and all that kind of stuff, so we've already started discussing that with him, so...
Are you also open to, uh, I guess, materials and? I mean, it looks like, I mean, certainly the approach, the design approach seems to be to coordinate more with the Justice Center, which is more, you know, modern, contemporary, not necessarily in keeping with historic character downtown Canton.
We, we did, uh, we did actually follow the Justice Center and tried to make it, uh, look just like the existing Justice Center.
Okay. Mr. Carlin?
Gentlemen, the, once your annex to the Mills Justice Center is complete, there won't be any parking on that side or any access to, for the public on that side. Is that correct? So, all business in and out of this parking deck will be from that one entrance on North Street?
That's right.
Okay. All right. That's all the question. Thank you.
Ms. McGrue?
Thank you. Uh, another thought, uh, something for you to think about. I wanted to plant a seed of possibly a sculpture, um, modern art, historical art that, uh, the, the county might put in the courtyard to contribute to our initiative, Ms. Schmidt's initiative, to, uh, bring more public art to the city. So, if you would think about that, we'd be very grateful.
We're, yeah, we're, we're always open to that. You know, it's, it's, it's right there in the square in, in downtown, so yes, we will, you know, we're always open to that, and feel free to come to us with any ideas and all that, so...
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
So, we have two public hearings scheduled for this evening. Those are the third and final public hearings on our twenty twenty-one millage rate and our, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-two proposed budget. We will have public hearings separately for those two items. Mr. Peppers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm gonna quickly go through this presentation. This is just a little bit of information about the property tax rate history for the city. Uh, as you can see, back in nineteen ninety-seven, it was eight point five mills. Uh, we have been at five point four mills since two thousand seventeen, and this year's budget is based off holding the millage rate steady at five point four again. Some tax rate comparisons with other cities. You can see, uh, when you include fire services, whether those are, are paid to the county for fire district or they're included in, uh, in the traditional city tax bill. City of Canton has the lowest tax rate of any of the cities in Cherokee County. Just an example of property tax calculation, uh, we're gonna use a, a friend named James Smith. Uh, his home has a fair market value of three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that is, uh, discounted to forty percent for the taxable value, which is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, if you multiply that hundred and twenty thousand dollars towards the, uh, with, by the millage rate of, uh, five point four, the tax bill would be six hundred and forty-eight dollars to the city. And then, in, in basic comparison, for every fifty thousand dollars of value, there's about a hundred and eight dollars of additional property taxes. So, a home in the hundred and fifty thousand dollar range is gonna be about three hundred and twenty-four dollars in property taxes. When you get up to a half million dollars, you're just over a thousand dollars in city property taxes. Those property taxes, of course, pay for all the city services. Uh, for us, that's fire, uh, police, all of our public safety, municipal court, code enforcement, parks and recreation, street maintenance, building and safety services, zoning, and other, other items. Few highlights on the budget specifically. Uh, the budget does, uh, add some new personnel in the city. We'll be adding a Housing Residential Services Manager and an Economic Development and Tourism Manager, and those are in response, uh, specifically, uh, to items that occurred during the pandemic, and then also helping the city stretch forward on those services for our residents. We're adding two new positions to assist with parks and recreation as we've added more green space and trails and, and parks to the city. Two additional positions in the Streets Department to assist with, uh, additional right-of-ways that we've acquired over the last few years. We're adding a Team Clean Canton position that assists with sanitation, uh, and... We're adding a Team Clean Canton position that assists with sanitation, uh, and other services throughout Public Works. A new Development Services Inspector to help, uh, offload some of the inspections that are being done, uh, on the development side. A Utilities Engineer, that's part of our succession planning, uh, in that group, and then a part-time receptionist in the Police Department. Additionally, there's some increases in cost of services. The budget includes a 5% COLA for employees. There's a 5% increase as it relates to employee benefits. There's no increase to our workers' comp insurance, a 5% increase in our property and casualty insurance. We've estimated a 2% increase for natural gas, another 2% increase in electricity costs. Additional operational upgrades. We're adding, again, that Housing Residential Services Office, a new Office of Economic Development and Tourism. Uh, the Police Department's going to be, uh, doing a replacement TASER program. That's a five-year program, uh, that, that includes maintenance, but that will launch next year. Also, we'll be working with Enterprise on, uh, fleet services. We'll be moving to leased fleet as opposed to owned fleet. Additional Public Works equipment as it relates to, uh, cutting services, uh, funding a citywide transportation study, and then technology upgrades in our Building and Safety Services Department. The budget also includes some continued projects that have already started, the connection between Heritage Park and Bowling Park as it relates to our trail, uh, and the old ball ground sewer, which is in combination with that project, improvements to Harmon Park, uh, the construction for the Archer Street parking deck and the solar canopy, and then also work with the Jones Building. We have also tried to put together, uh, some information on our capital plan for the next few years. As you know, the city adopted a roadmap with eight tenants, and so we're going to present that, uh, in the form of those tenants. Uh, we do have some additional revenue streams that are, that are involved in this capital planning. The most significant new stream to us is the American Rescue Plan Act. Those are funds that were set aside by the federal government. City of Canton will receive $11.4 million. Uh, all of those funds must be expended by the end of 2026, but they have to be encumbered by the end of '24. We did receive our first check, uh, of $5.7 million last week, uh, from the federal government through the Governor's Office of Planning and Budgets. We've estimated 4.5 million in impact fees, 15.6 million in our current SLOSTER sales tax, another 5.8 in a future sales tax. Uh, we're working on a tax allocation district, uh, that includes parts of downtown Sunnyside, Marietta Road corridor. We estimate about $25 million in revenue from that. Uh, special tax district in the Riverstone area as it relates to infrastructure. Uh, we estimate about a million and a quarter of hotel taxes in that three-year period, 240,000 in rental car taxes, and then, of course, we have our utility financing, our bond that's working on our, uh, water pollution control plant, which is about $70 million. So that's a total of $134 million in special funds. I'm not going to read this, but this is a little explanation of each of those funds. You can find it on the city's website, uh, or as part of the agenda on this particular item. Um, under the tenet of creating great neighborhoods, as we said, we're creating that Office of Residential and Housing Services. We're also working on creating a Canton Housing Trust Fund that would assist with things such as home improvement and blight through a revolving loan fund there, first-time home buyer assistance, an acquisition fund to assist in acquiring, uh, properties for future housing, and then also partnering with the Canton Housing Authority in their RAD conversion application to replace their units on Ship Street. Uh, we've also included some money in there for placemaking improvements to some of our older neighborhoods, and we have funds to help with the planning of our property at Laurel Canyon, uh, that was once supposed to be a fire station. Uh, on celebrating our diversity, uh, we continue to work in our Sunnyside Exit 16 area. There's funds in there for wayfinding signage and pedestrian improvements. We do expect to replace the Canton Creek Bridge in that corridor. Additional funding for services related to translation and outreach, uh, to minority communities, uh, with English as a second language. Uh, there's funding in place for minority business assistance, and then, of course, culturally impactful events and programming. Most of these items that are funded through ARPA or the American Rescue Plan, we are following the guidelines that were provided to us in the interim rule from the federal government. So that's why you'll see a diversity of, of programming associated with those federal funds. On advancing regional economic success, uh, we've got a new partnership plan with the Cherokee, uh, County Chamber of Commerce to promote new businesses, a partnership with the Cherokee Office of Economic Development to help do some, uh, economic studies, uh, within the city of Canton. We talked about establishing that Office of Economic Development and Tourism. There's funds in there for citywide marketing and outreach, small business support programs, investment in our cultural arts initiatives as a city, small business innovation grants, and property acquisition for future economic development projects. On enhancing historic downtown, uh, we have some, uh, infrastructural improvements. Our goal is to remove the overhead utilities in a portion of downtown and provide matching grants to assist the property owners in that. Also studying downtown traffic and pedestrian, uh, navigation, and then the actual funding of implementation of those projects, continuation of that Archer Street parking deck and solar canopy, um, our tax allocation district and what, uh, consulting services are related to that, improvements and upgrades at the Canton Theater, uh, programming with Main Street Program, and then some additional staffing for downtown. On sustaining our natural environment, uh, we talked about fleet conversion. We also including electric vehicles in our fleet moving forward. Uh, we've got our water treatment plant improvements that were approved by council earlier this summer. Uh, we're working on natural resources study and programming for the Etowah River, uh, contracting with a certified arborist to assist with our landscape palette, um, public facility improvements, uh, that's mainly around heating and air systems in our public facilities. That was one of the programs that the ARPA fund specifically, uh, placed for local governments, and then working on automated meter reading, uh, for our utility system. Connecting citizens to parks and recreation, we have an outdoor plyometric gym, uh, at Heritage Park, improvements to Harmon Park, which include the, the, uh, current facilities, uh, the addition of the mini pitch field, additional parking and facilities along the river, and improvement of the overall park. Uh, working on additional parks and recreation land acquisitions, uh, the improvements in the Riverstone area with pedestrian access, uh, the bowling park, tennis and basketball courts will be upgraded, continuation of the Etowah River Trail from Heritage to Bowling Park, playground upgrades throughout the city, including added, uh, accessible equipment, and then a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. On improving infrastructure for future demands, we continue to work on a water pollution control plant, uh, taking that to seven MGD, um, working on additional water capacity, perhaps through contract with Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority, uh, the citywide transportation plan, transportation and design improvements at State Route 140 and Marietta Highway, design, uh, improvements, utility relocation and construction, uh, for design elements, uh, and road improvements at State Route 140 and Reinhardt College Parkway, right-of-way acquisitions associated with those projects, and then our regular paving streets. And then finally, we're leading with excellence. Uh, we're working on an internship program for the city, uh, improved access and, and marketing for things like town hall meetings and community outreach, uh, leadership development for our boards and commissions. Uh, there's a one-time essential service worker add-on pay for the pandemic support for city staff, working on the city's retirement system, and also merit contingency for talent retention in the future for the city. Basically, what this means is under our capital plan and these funding sources, those items that we had identified in our roadmap for success that we have planned to do over the next five, 10, 15 years, we're going to be able to, um, complete those a lot faster. We think we'll be started with most of those within the next three years, with those being accomplished within the next three to five years. Uh, it will really help the city as we're planning for the next sales tax referendum, future of impact fees, uh, and then additional capital projects that might come on the board as well. I am happy to answer any questions that you might have after the public hearing closes.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So we had one sign-up sheet for a public hearing. So what I will do is open the public hearing, um, for both the millage rate and the budget, uh, and then we will close that public hearing, and then council will consider both items. We will discuss, uh, and act on those items if there is desire by council to do so separately, um, since they were listed on the agenda that way. So, uh, at this point, we'll, we'll open the public hearing for the, um, 2021 millage rate and the 22 budget. Uh, we had one citizen sign up to speak, uh, at the public hearing, Mr. Thomas Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am grateful to have learned everything that Mr. Peppers has shared in regards to the budget that has been prepared by his administration finance director, and I too am more grateful that council is on the precipice of investing significantly in pedestrian infrastructure improvement, which I and many, many others here in the city rightfully benefit from. And even more so that council is also on the precipice of investing in the Exit 16 Sunnyside corridor, an underserved portion of the community that is, uh, minority majority. However, um, despite all of the wonderful projects that are included and, and the bountiful cornucopia of this budget, and also all of the good things that are poised to come out of it, I have a few small concerns. Canton has been very, very fortunate over the past, I would say, eight years to keep its, uh, millage rate the lowest in the county and very hypercompetitive and very attractive to people who wish to build, invest, or purchase a home here. But I wonder for how much longer that can be. Council is drawing, uh, yet again, from its contingency account funds to balance this budget, and the city currently utilizes, based on Mr. Pepper's admittance, uh, admission and his writings, to the tune of $1.5 million monthly, um, in, in city funds and resources from that, um, what it costs to run the city. My fear is, especially even more so, that many of Canton's, one of the things that attracts this population growth is Canton's promise that at 62, that, that the seniors can claim their, uh, homestead exemption. And as I had said at this time last year, my worry is, even though not everything in the budget is appropriated from general funds, some things are. My worry is, is how much longer can council continue to boast having the lowest millage rate in the county amongst not only all the municipalities, but also the county itself, and continue to be able to draw from those contingency funds without either raising the millage rate while at the same time continuing to, uh, keep that promise to our seniors that once they reach 62, they can claim that homestead exemption against, uh, up to, I believe, $250,000 of a home against the city's millage portion of their, of their tax assessment. So as I had said before, although I am grateful that there's all this that's in there and there is much to be had, and even with that, that yourselves and the city's administration sees the city not for what it is, but what, for what it could be, I just would ask that the city continue to be good conservative stewards of every single dollar, whether from special funds, general funds, tax funds, or even federal funds that has been vested to you by your constituents, such that in the future, you will not be required to draw from your special contingency, and that you will be able to continue to keep your millage rate none the same, consistently lower, as opposed to having to raise it if it wasn't for the contingency. I believe there was a portion in Mr. Pepper's writing that suggests that our millage rate would be adjusted upwards. I understand that's not the case now because that's not what you advertised, but in the alternative parallel universe, it would be more along Waleska's 6.6 or so and, and not the 5.4 that we concurrently boast based on our advertisement. So I just ask that you keep that in, in your minds moving forward, but, uh, despite that, I'm grateful that there is much to be had, and I count myself fortunate that, uh, I can call Canton home with all of these wonderful projects that are on the horizon.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. And Mr. Weaver is the only, uh, citizen to sign up to speak at the public hearing, so we will close the public hearing and, um, begin our discussion on these two matters. I did just want to start by saying and thanking our staff, um, and thanking our finance director and our finance team, uh, our city managers, uh, our department heads for their hard work on the budget, uh, and our city council for their vision and their stewardship of our taxpayer funds. The hard work on the roadmap for the future, as you can see, the budget is, is, is driven by the, the roadmap, and, uh, I think it's a great plan, but great plans are, are, have no value if, if they cannot be financed and, and, uh, executed, implemented in a cost-effective manner. So it's a very exciting budget. I think, uh, the process has been the most transparent and open, uh, one to date. I'm very proud of the budget, um, and what we have accomplished and what we expect to accomplish over the next three to five years, which we were projecting in the roadmap to take us 15 years. So, um, I don't know why it's going to take us so long, but we'll, we'll, we'll get it done. But, uh, but thank you all for your, for your hard work, uh, and for our citizen support, and for their input into the roadmap and, and letting us know what was important to them. So it really helps us, uh, define our priorities. So at this point, I will open up, uh, to council discussion, any possible action on the, uh, approval of the 2021 millage rate. Ms. McGrew?
I had a question for Mr. Peppers, if I may.
Yes.
I don't find in my notes, and I may not have asked this before, but can you describe the transportation study that we will be embarking on this year?
We haven't identified it yet as to what it will be. But ultimately, what we've, what we've put the funds in place for are to look at those corridors that, um, would not be directly impacted by, uh, Georgia Department of Transportation, but are more local road corridors. So one of the areas that we talked about was specifically looking at that corridor from, on Marietta Highway from State Route 1, uh, State Route 20 at Herndon Lane all the way down to Exit 14, um, and, and, and pricing that out for a study. It may be that we're able to do a citywide transportation study, or it may be that we need to focus on one corridor at a time. We did that, if you'll recall, a few years ago, where we were looking at that State Route 140 corridor and partnered with Cherokee County on that, and then turned around and had great success with the Atlanta Regional Commission in getting funding to move forward with that project. So our goal would be to look at a similar corridor or group of corridors that would put us, uh, at a better place for some of that transportation improvement funding moving forward. But we haven't identified those particular areas yet. I would expect to work with Ms. Wilson, uh, who's chairing the Transportation Committee, uh, and perhaps, uh, perhaps have a town hall meeting before we put anything to place on that.
And if the millage rate is approved at 5.4, uh, am I correct in that we pay to the county 3.4 for our fire protection and services?
It's 3.29.
3.29. So that means we operate the city at about 2.0 mills.
That's correct.
It's fairly lean, isn't it?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions?
If nothing else, may I?
Sure.
I'd like to make the, the motion that City of Canton, City Council, adopt 5.4 millage rate for the year 2021 and 22.
Second? Of a motion, there's a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. Moving along to the approval of the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget. Open up for discussion, questions? Mr. Tolan?
Uh, for those folks that may be here that don't understand what it means, or people that might be watching that don't understand, Mr. Peppers, would you please explain what the difference is between the money needing to be, the ARPA funds needing to be spent by 2026, but needing to be encumbered, particularly encumbered? What, what does that, what does that mean? The council knows what it means, but for, for other folks.
So basically, we have to have agreements in place by the end of 2024 on how those funds are to be spent. And luckily, we feel like we can spend all of our funds internally, uh, not having to contract out with different organizations or other, other jurisdictions. But the rule allows for you to start a project that doesn't end by 2024, but that the funds have been completely expended by 2026. So, uh, for instance, if we were doing a facility upgrade, uh, and we did not get the HVAC system started until the middle of 2024, we would be able to continue that project into 2025 if we needed to and have those funds available for it. We just have to have those funds. for it. We just have to have those funds dedicated by the end of 2024.
So then, as a follow-up, if we have a project where we have a contract in place, but yet it doesn't start in 2024, is that money still considered encumbered and within the
That is correct.
The scope? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Carlin?
I would just note that this roadmap that we all worked on, planning out for 15 years, had a huge diversity of projects, that there was no chance we'd get them done this quickly. So I wanted to say, we've thanked a lot of people here, certainly without the ARPA funds that came from the federal government, being able to leverage those federal funds, making tax dollars, local tax dollars go farther. And that's something that, you know, certainly appreciate those members of Congress that voted for it, and have given us this opportunity to do more for our city in a shorter period of time. Just want to make sure we make that note here as well. Thank you.
Definitely. I think we're making every dollar count, and putting it back into our city in the best possible services amenities at the lowest possible cost. It's an exciting budget. So, Mr. Schmidt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget as presented.
Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. This time, we will move into our regular meeting with the consideration to approve the minutes. You have in your packet special called council meeting draft minutes from July 1, and the council meeting draft minutes from July 1 as well. Any changes or additions to those meetings, or a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion to approve and a second by Mr. Estes, I believe, and several others. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. We have one informational item this evening, an update on the Great Sky zoning case. Mr. Dyer?
Yes, this, if you'll recall, two years ago now, there was a request for a conditional use permit to allow multifamily to be built on Pod 16 of Great Sky. That was denied. The applicant filed a lawsuit, and that's been pending. We've had discussions about compromise, and with the applicant's attorney and I, we discussed and decided that the best way to proceed was just have a public hearing, because anything was going to require a public hearing that we might approve as a compromise. So we have scheduled that public hearing for August 4. I can't tell you exactly how that'll go in the process, but the framework of it, and I thought, was it's considered as a reconsideration of the decision. That sort of puts us in a framework of what we're doing. They are going to come and present a proposal. I think we've seen some drawings of that. I expect it'll be those drawings again, a similar thing. And so you have some idea what's going to be presented. Public will have a chance to comment on it, and we'll see where it goes. The advertisement went out today, so it is now public that we are doing this. And with this announcement, another way of making it public. And at this point, I don't think the applicant has presented us with a full set of drawings, but I anticipate we'll have those before the public hearing, for everybody will know what they're actually proposing.
So would the public hearing be in September?
No, it'll be August 4.
Oh, it would be August 4.
You're going to have a long August 4 meeting, because there's three other public hearings, apparently.
On that, I know that this is different than our newly adopted policy on public hearings and projects. I understand why, but I know the intent of our new policy is to give public as much notice to comment, you know, on cases as possible. And I know we've gone through on this case, public hearing before, but also know things, and things that are being proposed with the project have changed. And you said council may get revised drawings before that public hearing that we would review, but I don't know that having a public hearing on August 4 certainly doesn't give the public adequate time to reviews what those changes are. Could there be any consideration of having the public hearing at the second meeting in August versus August 4? Is there pressing?
Well, it's been advertised now.
Okay.
So, but I do think you don't have to decide that night. And so if you wanted to have another, well, you wouldn't be able to advertise another public hearing. But you can certainly have a public input again before a decision is made. And I had a conversation with the applicant's attorney that I thought that was probably going to be likely, that you'd want to think about things. But you may come up with something. It's just unavoidable. I mean, we were going to do this one way or the other. And oftentimes, it's done when, you know, we've had some sort of agreement that we're bringing, and that's not the case here. This is just a way to get it started and to end it, so.
And to make it clear, I mean, we're not following our normal process because it's a legal case against the city, so we're being forced to follow a different process.
Because there's a party who has to agree on it, yes.
Exactly.
We don't control this unilateral.
But I do think it puts a burden on council and the city to make sure that our residents are informed as to what, you know, the circumstances are, what the new plans are, why the process has changed, and what is happening in this, with this project. So, Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Dyer, you said that we might have another public hearing. Would that be a legal public hearing that would have to be advertised?
No, I blurted that out without thinking.
Okay.
We would not have time to advertise for a public hearing.
So it would be, is the developer going to have the community meeting that we have? No. So that would take the place of the community meeting, maybe? We could call it then?
Well, we're having the public hearing on August 4, so that's our next meeting.
Right.
What happens after that, to be determined, I guess. And some of it is up to the developer, the applicant, because they can pull out of this and go to court anytime they want.
Well, I'm a little confused, because it's been stated many times that both sides speak at a public hearing, and then it's closed. No more public comments, no more input. Why, how is this different?
Well, I'm not sure we ever, I don't, I'm not sure we ever have no other comments. In terms of the public hearing, this is a little bit different, because it's not an initial application for rezoning. So there's been some case law that just says if you go to settle a lawsuit, it involves a zoning change, you have to have a public hearing. So that's what we're doing. We're just saying, but I don't, in terms of what may happen after that, we'll have to, you make a good point. I don't know. I really regret blurring that out now.
Well, I know in the past that, you know, once we have the public hearing, then the public doesn't get another chance to speak.
That's correct. And so we would have to vote to allow public comment. That would be what I would say.
And then we would have to give both sides the same amount of time, wouldn't we?
Yes. And it wouldn't have to be a public hearing, like the official public hearing. We could figure out something.
Okay.
Schmidt?
And after August 4, residents are welcome to email us and speak to us about this project, just like they always are welcome to, correct?
Correct. Yeah. And the only thing that would be changed is you might allow public comment on it.
Gotcha.
That we don't usually allow.
And then, in the same vein of letting everyone know what's going on, August 4 is a Wednesday?
Correct.
Not a Thursday, just so everybody knows.
Right. And I did want to, in one thing, I said, you do have a drawing that I don't think is going to be different than what, I mean, that can be shared. Because in terms of what they're asking for, technically, it's the exact same thing they asked for two years ago, which is multifamily. That's all we're talking about. The number that they are asking for is no different. It's just their mix of different uses within it that's changed. So you already have that information, and you can share that with people.
So, I mean, we've already had the public hearing back then and made the decisions. So this would just be, if we changed our mind, things would go in a different direction. But if not...
Essentially, they're coming and asking you, is there a compromise that you would agree to?
Okay.
And we're just playing that out in public.
Again, I do, it does put extra burden on the city, given that our, that August 4 is a Wednesday, not a typical Thursday, and that we're not following our typical process. So I think anything that we can do to get the information out to our citizens is vitally important. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. The plan that was given to us, the proposal for the Pod A, I don't recall getting anything for Pod B, so...
We have not seen anything yet.
All right.
It is my understanding that it'll just be a similar look on that other side.
Will this meeting, public hearing, be involving both pods then, or just Pod A on the water?
No, it'll be both.
Both pods.
So again, that's, you know, if the first time you see something is August 4, then that may direct to which way we go on this thing. I'm hoping that you'll see something ahead of time, which I expect.
I would certainly hope that we see, you know, an actual drawing on Pod B too, other than it's going to be something like Pod A. I don't think that's acceptable. It's my opinion.
No, they intend to do that.
Okay.
That's my understanding. It's just, and I think it may come next week. So we should have it for a couple of weeks.
And are we clear that they want to put apartments on Pod B also?
Yes.
Okay.
Question, Mr. Dyer, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves here, but can you ask the applicant if they have plans to have some sort of connectivity between, is it Pod B that's across reservoir, the non-lake side, non-water side, to the water side, if you will, Pod A? Because I don't think that's really been addressed, and...
The only way would be across the road, right?
Yeah.
Something other than that?
Some sort of bridge or something.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know that that's something they have an appetite for, but, you know, if this council chose to approve anything, those residents would surely want to enjoy some of the amenities that are on the other side of reservoir.
I will mention it to the attorney.
Thank you.
And this may not be the time, but can you explain to the public why we're being sued?
Yes. The lawsuit challenges two things. One is our conditional use permit process. They are arguing that we had, we could not impose the requirement to come and ask again because it was already allowed in their zoning. And so that's the, it's sort of a technical legal challenge. And then the second part is just challenging the decision that it wasn't based on proper reasons.
Is the city denying the developer the possibility to realize a good profit by using the property in other ways besides apartments?
I don't think there's been any evidence developed, one way or the other, on that. The case has not really been about that aspect of zoning.
And this pod is zoned planned development mixed use?
Great Sky as a whole is zoned that way. This pod had a long list of allowed uses, and multifamily was one of them.
A very long list of alternate uses.
It was almost every commercial use and almost every residential use.
So nothing to deny them the opportunity to make a profit?
That would depend on the market, but yes, I agree with you.
Any further discussion?
They've analyzed our legal position very well. But that's why the challenge to our conditional use permit process is the more significant challenge. Because if a court was to rule that we couldn't have imposed that on it, it goes back to the underlying zoning.
And if this isn't a question that can be answered tonight, I understand. Let's say that they don't bring anything forward that council can agree to, and the suit must go forward. Let's say the judge rules against the city. At that point, can the developer put anything they want on the pod without coming back to the city?
As long as it was one of the allowed uses under the underlying zoning, yes.
I see.
So their position is that they had a vested right to build apartments without having to come back and ask again. And I think the allowed number was 1,000, something like that.
And did they buy the property or after the CUP was put into practice?
I don't, it was very close, and I think it may have been a couple of months after we put it in.
So the knowledge was out there.
Yes. I believe that they're having a conversation with staff.
Next.
Further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Dyer. Any additional announcements? At this point, we'll move to our 10-minute public input. We had, I believe, Mr. Sellers, he'd signed up, but I think he changed his mind. And Mr. Thomas Weaver, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Mariota Hearing Camp. Thank you for allowing me to speak on second occasion. I look forward to the fact that tonight, it appears tentatively actionable for council to consider on second charter revision amendments that have been already read earlier this month. It is my hope that pending whatever your city attorney may present to you on the matter, that council will move forward and grant a favorable due passage recommendation and vote on that actionable item. Also, perhaps on a lighter note, I had the misgivings of having to speak with both Mr. Peppers and the mayor in regards to a concern that I had administrative proposed 2022 fiscal year fee schedule. The concerns that I have shared, I have been told, are being vetted by Misfits and others. And it doesn't appear, or at least not to my knowledge, that that's ready for a report by the municipal court, which is separate. I know that's judicial branch, separation of powers doctrine. But my concerns were, as I had stated in my letter, they went above and beyond just the municipal court fee fine schedule, the bond schedule. There were other portions that were included in my letter that I had also raised. And I just ask that if council is poised to grant a favorable due passage recommendation and vote on that item on second reading tonight, that council at least be willing to keep an open mind, should my concerns pan out, and council have the willingness, please, to address the 2022 fee schedule at some point in the future prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, starting on October 1, if any of my concerns that I had stated in my letter to the city's administration and the municipal court should be concluded administratively to leverage merit. So that's my ask of council. I know that that's something that I don't believe the administration's prepared to speak to yet, or they might, I don't know. But it's just my ask. So thank you. And in the meantime, I'll keep on the sunny side.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Move on to the consent agenda. We have three items. As usual, I will read these three items. If anyone would like any of these items removed from the consent agenda for further discussion, we will do so. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Item A, approval of conservation easement for Etowah River Trail from Heritage Park to Bowling Park Trail Extension. Item B, approval of ethics and conduct ordinance. Item C, approval of fiscal year 2022 municipal fee schedule. Any discussion? Anyone like any of those items removed? Any motions?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted to approve the consent agenda. Moving into old business, we have item A, discussion and possible action on cases AX 2102-004, Z 2102-005, and MP 2102-006 for Old Doss Properties LLC. Applicant is requesting to annex 75.212 acres located at 56560 Old Doss Lane, zone the property PDR, planned development residential, and approved master plan for the proposed project to consist of 150 residential units, including 14 residentially attached units. Mr. Paton, Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Paton's not with us tonight, so I'll be filling in on this one. I did speak with the representative from the applicant prior to the meeting, and he has requested council consideration that the item be tabled, so that they can review the county proposal as it relates to the 50-foot right-of-way and figure out how that would work.
Okay. As you know, we had this project come before us, what, last year, two years ago? It's been a while. It's been a while. The county has already filed mediation on this, on this, on this case, again, due to their issues with, with the road right-of-way, issues with the development, again, which I think are the county's issues and developers' issues. But it's up to council if, any discussion on if the council would vote to table the item or would like to proceed with discussing the, the case and possible action? Mr. Carlin?
Since this was brought to our attention, I've been thinking about it. And I think, you know, Mr. Peppers, what timeline are we looking at with tabling? Or Mr. Dyer, whoever would like to take it, what are we looking at for tabling that as relation to the mediation requirements?
August 4th would be the next council meeting. You could, you could decide to table it till August 4th. I guess you could decide to table it to the second meeting in August as well, if you wanted to. You just need to set that date.
I would just table till the next meeting, and then we can see where we stand. Well, the arbitration, the only thing that we have to immediately is pick the arbitrators. So, we, that deadline is July 23rd, so we'll have to do that part. After that, it slows down. There is, there is some time. And so, I think, but we don't want to, we're gonna have to take it meeting by meeting, I think.
My concern is that, you know, we're, we're kind of entering the same wormhole we ended on this case last time and, and went into mediation. And again, as I've stated several times, I stated in this case last time is that I think on annexation, our first question is how would this annexation, potential annexation benefit our existing citizens? I've looked at it every possible direction. And I'm having a hard time, you know, finding that. I see, right now, I see issues with the county, I see issues with the road and the development. My personal opinion is that, you know, we would just be annexing problems. But, but again, it's, 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 it's up to council with how you would want to proceed with this, so... Mr. Estes?
Yeah, I, I agree. I feel like my concern would be tabling would just kind of, I don't know, put false hope for, or even create further anxiety by the county on something that we don't know if we're even interested in annexing. So, therefore, I would, do we need to make a motion on, on the tabling? Or just on the, the matter that's on?
I believe we need to start with a motion on, on, on consideration for tabling.
I'd make a motion to deny tabling. Second.
Motion is second to deny tabling the, the case. Further discussion?
I would, I can. Oh, no, that, don't, there's a, a harm here. I think there's a lot of concern about this. And, Mr. Mayor, I know you articulated those concerns that were raised. I don't see a harm in allowing an opportunity, a very brief opportunity, for this applicant to try to reach an agreement with the county. And if that agreement isn't acceptable, acceptable for what this council is looking for, then that might change our conversation. Certainly, if they can't, then we'll go forward on that. Don't know there's a reason not to allow that. The only option, thing we'd be losing out is picking an arbitrator, which is perpunctory at this point. That would be my, my argument.
Further discussion? We have a motion on the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So, let's do a roll call. Mr. Carlin?
Against the motion to table.
Okay.
Or against the motion to not table.
Okay, okay. Okay. Mr. Tolan?
I'm for the motion.
To deny tabling?
Correct.
Ms. Schmidt?
Four.
Four?
Four.
Four? So, we have four, um, four, um, four votes to deny tabling, so the motion carries. Okay. So, discussion, possible action. I guess we would need to discuss and act on each of these items separately, wouldn't we? Or just annexation? Right. But the annexation, I mean...
If you were to vote to, if you deny the annexation...
The rest, okay.
If you voted to annex, and then you did a zoning that the applicant didn't like, we would have to let them withdraw.
Correct, just, I want to clarify. So, discussion, possible action on the case AX 2102-004 for the annexation, 75.212 acres located at, get my glasses here, 560 Old Doss Lane. Discussion. Mr. Estes?
I'd make a motion to deny the annexation.
Motion to deny. Uh, second by Mr. Tolan. Further discussion? Mr. Carlin?
To clarify, if we deny annexation, there's a, there's a time period that it cannot be considered again? Is that one year?
I believe it's, it's 12 months. Further discussion, questions? Ms. McGrew?
Denied without prejudice?
We, we have a four, because that's what you, as to the reapplication.
On annexation?
So, does that mean it could come back short of a year?
You, you could weigh in at the 12-month bar, yes.
Would there be application fees for, for the applicant to come back?
Yes, unless you said otherwise, which we've done in the past as well.
What are the application fees?
The big, the big is the actual application fee. That's the big cost.
How much is that?
Mr. Carlin?
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Tolan, you started?
Mr. Patton needs to be here to tell you how much that is.
I know.
It's thousands.
Is that something that we have to decide tonight to deny? Could we decide that, do we have to say tonight, without prejudice, as Ms. McGrew's phrased it? We have to decide that tonight?
We denied, well...
That's not something we can later...
If you're gonna deny it, you need, if that's what you want to do, deny it, but allow them to file within 12 months, you need to say that.
We just deny...
The applicant would like to withdraw, which would eliminate that problem. So, they, they would like to be able to withdraw that. So, you could just vote to allow them to withdraw the application.
We have a motion on table to deny annexation. Do we need to vote on that motion first?
Or withdraw the motion?
Draw, yeah, withdraw.
You withdraw? Motion is withdrawn.
Make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw?
Second.
Motion to allow the applicant to withdraw? There's a second? Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion. Item B, discussion and possible action on proposed charter amendments. Mr. Dyer?
So, this is for your, the second approval of this, as required by state law. We, uh, we voted to approve at the last meeting. Uh, this is the second and final vote that you would take on this. If you approve it, the charter amendments will become valid. We have to provide them to the Secretary of State, and there are some other notice things we have to do, but otherwise, they'll be final.
I have one question. And I know this was discussed in one of the, the meetings and had meant to bring it forward too. And I, I know we've discussed this several times over the years. But in Section 286, with regards to the agenda, item A in the charter states, "Members of the public may request that a particular subject be placed on the agenda for the following meeting. To be considered, this request must be submitted in writing to the city clerk and received at least 10 days before the meeting." I've expressed concerns, I know several people too, that, that, and it's not because we don't want the public to, to comment, because we have public comment at every meeting. My concern is that, that this is so wide open that any member of the public, and it doesn't even say city resident, could add something to our city council agenda. And it doesn't say, and it says to be considered, and there's no criteria for considering it, or denying it, or no process. I find it to be very problematic. I have not found another city charter that has that in there, that a, that a citizen can add something to this.
Is that, is that in our charter or in the ordinances?
It's in the code of ordinances. I thought it was in the charter also.
Because our, our administration is also Section 2. So, that's why I, I think it may be in the ordinances, it's not the charter.
Okay.
Because I, we would have picked that up in our charter review.
Okay, okay.
So, I think that's just an ordinance amendment to take that.
Okay, so it's one of those ordinances we need to address. Okay, then, never mind. But I think it's something, one of those ordinance issues we need to look at, so... But otherwise, I'm good with it. I also want to, I do want to thank the Charter Committee for the, for the great work in reviewing these items. And just to be for clarity, these, these items are the, the non-legislator, like legislative, uh, required approval.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and so, what, uh, what we have talked about doing, if you approve these, and these become final, uh, is that there are still some election things that we need to have the legislature change. Um, and we could take these, this revised charter and take it and have the legislature adopt the entire charter.
Okay.
Including what we need to change, those other items we talked about. So, we'll have further discussions and processes, because that can't happen till January.
Right.
So, we would probably want to let the legislative delegation know in, I think, November, they usually start asking. So, we would, that, our timing should be November or December for getting it all finalized and to then...
But these items, if we, if we approve it tonight, we're adopting these by home rule, would these be effective immediately?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Further discussions or motions?
I make a motion that we approve the charter amendments as listed in the agenda.
Second.
A motion and agenda? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion.
I want to thank Mr. Dyer and Mr. Peppers and Mr. Ingram, Mr. Carlin, Ms. Schmidt, for working on the committee and getting this done. It wasn't nearly as tedious as I thought it would be. But I have a feeling that whoever's on the next committee will have more to do.
Yes. Thank you, I agree. And then, and thank you, Ms. McGrew, for sharing that. For all the great work, so... Item C, discussion and possible action on moratorium on gas stations and convenience stores with fuel pumps. Mr. Dyer?
So, at our last meeting, we had enacted a moratorium till July 31st. And so, you discussed that you wanted to extend that because the, the consensus seemed to be that there were changes we wanted to make, even though that we didn't know exactly what those changes would be. So, this is a moratorium to prohibit applications for any kind of permit for a gas station or a convenience store of fuel pumps. Those are the two definitions in our development code that would apply. And that would give us, and this is until November 18th, which is the second meeting in November. And that would give us time to conduct a public hearing and go through the zoning amendment process. So, the timeframe would probably be in August, coming up with an ordinance, advertising, and then holding a public hearing in October, and then voting in November.
Discussion comments? So, we'd go through, would you explain that process one more time?
Well, I, the, uh, it's a zoning amendment process. So, um, we have to sort of build in those timelines that we've talked about. Obviously, there's not a public participation meeting, but they would still be the same, talk about it, have a technical report on it. But to do that, we have to have a proposed ordinance. So, we would have to, at the August meeting, kind of come up with a proposed ordinance. I, from your conversation, it sounded like we, there was some interest in a distance requirement between, uh, stations. And that there was, uh, seemed like a, most of you wanted to do some kind of architectural controls. So, um, we'll proceed that way. Mr. Patton and I will get together and, uh, put something together. We're, we're kind of guessing at what you want, but I think we have enough.
Would it be helpful to have a council committee to work with you on that? Or do you think, you know, Mr. Patton can bring something back to Canton, uh, to council for us to review or?
Well, it's always helpful to have a group to talk to and bounce ideas off of, where we're not going in a direction you don't want to go. At least that would be three of you who...
I would like to appoint a council committee then to, to work on these ordinance changes of Ms. McGrew, Mr. Carlin, and Ms. Schmidt.
Getting the band back together.
Yes.
So, we will try to have a meeting in early August or late, I mean, in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to extend the moratorium?
Yeah, we do need to approve, approve the resolution.
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All members voted for the motion, except for Mr. Estes. Motion carries. Item D, discussion and possible action toward a change order to Clark Reeves Young to increase the water pollution control plant capacity from six to seven MGDs?
Mr. Hatavian is actually at the Water Conference right now. So, he is here to discuss this, but I'll be happy to present it on his behalf. As you, as you recall, at the last meeting, he gave an update that basically provided us with a price from Clark Reeves Young of about $1.7 million in about a six-week time to do the additional work, six MGD to seven MGD. And then additionally, we had, um, uh, another change order from Atkins, which is the next item for the construction management of that.
I make a motion that we approve the change order to Clark Reeves to increase water pollution control plant capacity from six to seven MGD.
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion. And item E, discussion and possible action toward a change order to Atkins to increase that water pollution control plant capacity to, from six to seven MGD?
Total cost of that's $102,000.
Discussion, motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. Item F, discussion and approval of filing condemnation action for easement for the sewer line and pedestrian trail across property of Crescent Farms Canton LLC. Mr. Dyer?
Yes, so this is the sewer line running behind Mariota Highway Properties down, down the hill, where we're also building the trail. This particular property, uh, we discovered was still titled in the name of an LLC that had owned the entire property. There would have been 100-foot mitigation easement given for the reservoir. And that 100-foot, it then was not subsequently sold to the current owner. So, this condemnation is to get the legal right to go onto the property through the easement. So, you would be approving the declaration of taking, and then the mayor will sign that. I did, I did have a email correspondence with the appraiser. Uh, we think that the appraisal is going to be 5,000 or less. So, we will be paying that into court. The owner is an LLC that was dissolved in 2010. The individual owner, uh, we, we tried to determine whether he still lived at some addresses we had, and, and he had lost the property in foreclosure. So, we don't have any way of contacting anybody. So, the condemnation will, there'll be attempts to serve somebody, and if an owner shows up, they get the money, so... So, the motion would just be to approve the declaration of taking for the condemnation of Crescent Farms Canton LLC.
And the money would just sit in escrow until someone claimed it?
So, it's in the clerk's office. And I guess 50 years from now, they'll eschew it to the state.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments?
That was just going to be my only question. It's, it doesn't sit with our clerk's office, it sits with spirit quarters.
Yes.
Gotcha. And the registry down there.
Until they start bothering me about the money still being there.
Did we have any idea of the market value?
That's what the appraisal is about, that's what it.
But I, I saw the appraiser, but he didn't put any amount in the market value.
No, that's why I went ahead and asked him, so he told me it, it would be 4,700 is what he thinks.
Okay.
He hasn't finalized it, though, but it'll be less than $5,000.
Okay.
Further questions, comments, discussion, motion? Mr. Estes?
Make an approval, a motion to approve the filing, the condemnation action for easement for the sewer line and pedestrian trail across the property of Crescent Farms Canton LLC.
Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Members voted for the motion. Item G, discussion and possible action on call for referendum for distilled spirit package sales within the city of Canton. Mr. Peppers.
Well, isn't this exciting?
Yes. Tilted excitement in my voice.
Probably the one question I've had the most since I became a city manager. Why don't we have package sales of distilled spirit liquor in the city? And of course, as you're aware, the state changed the law this year that was signed in act by the governor that allows that process to be called for referendum by the city council as opposed to a petition of a percentage of registered voters. What you have before you is a copy of the resolution to call for that election. We have already filed everything that we have to with the Secretary of State's office.
Questions, comments, discussion?
I make a motion to, I make a motion to approve the call for referendum at the November election.
A second. Everybody wants on that second.
Got to let Joel inhabit, so I'm proud of you, Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion? All members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. Item H, discussion of proclamation policy that's need. We distributed the proclamation policy that was in our, I guess, in our policy manual existing the last time, and again, I just ask you guys to review that and offer any possible comments about that. We did also discuss with our city clerk about just kind of strengthening this, this policy, which I think is, is just a good direction, just so everyone's clear of it. And we, we did like kind of consult Woodstock's, and they actually have a proclamation request form, which I thought was just a, a good model, so I'm just passing that out to kind of just show you guys what they do. And it just, you know, basically is a simple request form, saying they understand the criteria, and they, were to submit it to the city clerk. Mr. Dyer did have a couple of comments to, to possibly just strengthen the language a little bit. Mr. Duck, could you speak to that? I printed them out, and now I can't find them, and.
Yes, so, so what I've, I don't really know what happens now, so I'm sort of flying blind a little bit, but from my review of them, our current policy says local charitable fundraising events. I believe that charitable means 501(c)(3) tax exempt, so that would be one thing, just to clarify that, that we would, and this is who we're saying we would give a proclamation to. And arts and cultural celebrations, I would perhaps say within the city. We're not letting people advertise their events that are outside the city. One of the important things to think through is, who, who are we, who is connected enough to the city to, to warrant a proclamation? And several that I did find that I looked at, for instance, Woodstock says organizations that do work in the city, that's another way to put it. We say no direct relationship. I kind of like the do-work, but then there are things that are done in the county that we would probably want to support, that aren't, may not actually be in Canton. So if you limit it to city, are you eliminating things that you might otherwise support? So that's something to think through, but I think that limitation is real important. What we're trying to avoid is getting dragged into political controversies and things like that, so we try to make it be a local organization who's doing something local to warrant a proclamation. Another thing to think about is the process. Again, I don't really know what's done now, but some, some places in Woodstock said that a council member had to also sign in on, sign off on the request, and that's something I would think about if I, right now, I think the mayor is the only one that reviews them, and there's no, so anybody can go ask. You're putting a lot on one person to decide to be the gatekeeper, and, but I don't, you know, what the mayor thinks about that, but that would be one thing to think about, is that if somebody wanted to get a proclamation, they met the requirements, they had to at least convince one of you to sign off on it, which I think is probably a pretty good screening mechanism. We haven't had this trouble, you know, which, again, the lawyer in me says, oh, we start giving that proclamation, and we don't do that one, you know, and, and, and that's a sort of a way to kind of screen that. There's also nothing that prohibits you from bringing your own proclamations as a council member, and we can put that in the written policy, that you don't have to get the mayor to do it, you can just make a motion and ask for it to be voted on anyway. Council doesn't vote on proclamations right now, they're just done by the mayor, and you may want to think about that whole process. We don't want to be voting on a bunch of proclamations, which, this jogged my memory, which is why we came up with this policy, because how, how do you decide which ones? A lot of cities made it very hard to get a proclamation, and they offered the alternative of the mayor just sort of writing a letter of commendation, you know, because what warrants you actually reading them in public? That's what we're thinking about.
Right. And, and again, I, I, I don't want to overly complicate this, I just wanted to, to provide some clarity to it, I did. And again, I don't want to make it that difficult, but I don't think it should be easy to get one either, because I think it is something special, and I think, you know, it should be reserved for something special that is of benefit to the city's citizens, or someone working on behalf to, to, for the betterment of our citizens and our city. And, and again, I think if we can just tighten this up a little bit, so there's a process just so council and the mayor knows that when someone requests something. I have given some letters of commendations before, just because there were things that, you know, were very meaningful to like one person, but, you know, didn't, I didn't think met the criteria of this policy, which, which is fine, and I'm happy to do, but that's just kind of a personal, you know, decision, but, but I think we can just tighten some of those things up a bit, and if you could look at just some of that language, and, and maybe, we just had this for discussion and no action to some of them, maybe we can look at that in, in, in August, so.
So one, one organization that comes to mind, as I was thinking of, ones we've done that might be hard to kind of classify, so we do the Red Ribbon Week, which is a anti-drug done by the scouts, I believe. So it's usually a local scout bringing it forward, and I think that would fit, because it's a local person bringing it forward, but really, you know, it's sort of this larger thing. So we don't want to define that out of it, but, but making it too tight, so.
Right.
That's an example of one that, where I, if it was in the city, maybe that's, you know, still some subjective decision-making in determining that.
Right. And, you know, they're, you know, they're national organizations, like the, the Make a Difference, the, we gave the three heroes, local heroes, proclamation, but it's a national thing, but because we're recognizing three citizens, I think that, that qualifies as our three citizens and, and all, but I think, you know, I think those would be things that come up, but I think, again, as long as we have the kind of criteria there, that, again, we're not trying to, I don't, I don't see it as trying to, you know, overly control it, but it's things that, again, they're great causes out there, but if they don't have any direct impact or, or not, you know, direct benefit to the city, then, you know, I don't, they're not worthy causes, but not worthy of a city proclamation, so.
And I think that's, we do have that, and that's probably the limiting factor that works, is that it benefits the city, or it's something that benefits the city, as opposed to taking a position on the national issue or something.
Right. And that was my main control, is like, you get one, but you can't have one, so. Ms. Estes?
What about the local Ku Klux Klan? With that, where does that fall in? You know, I was just going to say we just give it to the mayor per ten at the time.
Well, and, and that's the, that is, I mean.
Like, where do we?
We say we won't issue them for matters of political controversy, ideological, religious, or individual convictions, so it depends on what they're asking you to do, I think.
Yeah.
But there's just a whole lot of subjective.
Yeah, and at some point, we gotta, or someone needs to say, we're just not going to do, and.
And we've had some requests, you know, saying, you know, the proclamation is for this, but we want you to include this language, and it's really winds up being something, you know, political or controversial, and again, the overall cause is not, you know, not bad, but, you know, the motives may not be.
And it shouldn't be a, the proclamation shouldn't be taking a position.
Right.
Those are, those should be resolutions, you know, if, like we've done on proposed laws or whatever.
Right.
So that's kind of a one-way kind of screening, and if you're asking me to choose a side on any issue, we're not doing that.
If there was something that council wanted to consider for taking a side on, we could, you know, consider it for a resolution, and we could vote on that, you know. So I think if there was something that came, you know, certainly if it came to me and I had some question about, I would certainly bring it to council and say, you know, I don't think this is, but what do you guys think, so.
So it's every five-year reexamining of this, so.
Okay.
We'll do that.
But again, I, I just, one of the things I wanted to kind of clean up, but again, if you have other comments or thoughts before the next meeting, feel free to afford them, so. Thank you. New business, we're moving into some technical reports on some upcoming cases. Mr. Peppers, would you mind, I know we've had some discussions today, we're, we're all getting used to this new zoning, planning, and development process, and I think for council's benefit, but also more importantly for our citizens' benefit, and for our development partners' benefit, explain one, because I know they're listed as discussion tonight, but I think that is in, Mr. Green is going to grace us with his discussion of the technical report, which I believe the last, on these items, last meeting was the informational item. This is, this technical report discussion, the next meeting will be the actual public hearing where we will actually discuss it, correct?
That's correct.
But if, if I'm wrong on that, please correct me, but please provide some clarity for all of us, please.
You're correct, and, and we're also working on it on the staff side as to how things are worded on the agenda. The way the process works is an application comes in on the first day of month number one. That item then gets mentioned to you under the city manager's report at the second meeting of that first month. The first meeting of the second month, that item is listed as an informational item with the case file, so that the public can look into what's being proposed. The second meeting that month, which is what you have before you right now, is the technical report from staff, just basically giving you information. Here's the property, here's the location, here's the zoning of, of what we have. At the first meeting of the next month is when you have your public hearing, and that's really the discussion time, that's when you're going to hear from the public and also the applicant, and be able to discuss with staff the particulars of that case, and then you'll vote on it at that next meeting. Now, having said that, if council has a question about, you know, what does that zoning mean, or where is this property located, I don't think that's an issue, but we're still working on the, the staff report, we're still working on, on what's being presented to you, so I don't know that we have a lot of answers, because we haven't heard from the applicant publicly as well, so there's not a whole lot we can answer, other than maybe a specific thing out of the technical report that's out there.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring some clarity to it, because I know we're getting questions from citizens also, and when we do post agenda, so I think if we could just also standardize the language around that, and maybe that informational item is under informational items on the agenda, and maybe the technical report is listed as a technical report, and maybe not a discussion, it might be helpful for, for everyone, but Ms. Wilson?
After the public hearing is closed, then there's no more discussion with the applicant or with the public, is that correct?
Not in a, not in a meeting setting. If the applicant, if the, if the, if the citizens want to send you an email, they could send you an email. If they want to talk to you personally, they could do that, but not in a council meeting setting. You wouldn't have any more public comment.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. I thought when the, I was under the impression when the public hearing closed, it was closed, but thanks. It's not really closed, you can still talk about it.
The corporate public hearing is closed, because you are the council. You wouldn't be hearing those comments as a group.
Okay.
But individually, if someone emails you or what have you, that, you're not tied to ex parte communications.
But we could talk with the applicant after the public hearing is closed?
The applicant would normally send their information through staff. Staff is going to take all the questions related to the public hearing and reach out to the applicant to get that information for you.
So the applicant could not, could not talk to the, to the council after the public hearing is closed?
We generally have not.
It's just very difficult, I mean, there's no law on this. But here's the problem that we're faced with. If, when you go to court, there's a record, and there, any appeal of a decision we make is based on the record that's been created. So if you heard something outside of the public hearing that caused you to vote one way or the other, we could, and, and our defense would be based on what you heard, it's not in the record. So you, but that's okay, I mean, you, you may hear things, but, but you really need to encourage people to come to the public hearing, and, and make known their, their positions, so that it becomes part of the record. That's why we keep suggesting emails. Those can become part of the written record. And so when we go to court, we have to show the judge that there was some evidence to support our decision. So we look to the record, and we say, see, here's where this information came out, that justifies our taking the action we took.
But it's, it's in an email, and it's written, it wouldn't be a phone call or a meeting.
If it's in an email, it's going to become part of the record. If you have a conversation, you now know it, but it's not part of the record.
Right.
And so if you were to come to a vote and say, well, I'm not, I'm voting against that because I heard this, well, it's not in the record.
So what if the applicant comes to you after the public hearing is closed, and you meet with them, and a staff member is there to take notes? Is that allowable?
So the policy, the, the procedure y'all adopted was that once, and, once a developer has filed an application, you're not meeting with that applicant until after the technical report's given by staff, and you cannot meet with them after the public hearing.
That's what I thought.
So you've got that window between the application, that you're not talking with them until after the staff report, the technical report, and up until the public hearing.
I think one thing that could happen would be that, that a controversy arises after the public hearing, that, because you may hear something from a resident, and you ask the staff, and the applicant tells you something, that, you know, that would be a reason that you might vote to table it again, or, you know, to have another public hearing. There may be ways to address that if things came up. But what we don't want is that back and forth happening not on the record.
Right.
Well, you know, I think that, again, our goal here was to improve the process, to improve opportunities for public input, and, you know, to be more open and transparent with that. And I know we've kind of published a process, and we, we've shared it, but again, we're, we're getting used to it, but I think it might be helpful if we, if we do have a very, you know, concise, you know, here are the, the opportunities, you know, here are the steps, here are the procedures, and we can put on the, the website, and here's, here are the rules for developers, for, for council members, and for citizens. For citizens especially, here's your opportunities of where you can provide inputs in these, you know, formats, you know, for these, you know, for the, you know, community hearings, public hearings, and, you know, this is what's appropriate, would that make sense? I mean, something we can just direct to people, and also there's a cheat sheet for us as well, so. But I think, you know, any additional clarity we can bring into the, the process is going to be helpful.
And I, it is fair to say, it, it creates a very stilted process, you know, for You know, fortunately, when you make a zoning decision, at this point, the courts view that as a legislative decision. So they expect that you're gonna have to listen to people and, and have people tell you what they think. So we just have to deal with it. What, what I'm trying to avoid in the staff is not being able to defend the decision you make. Because we've done something not in the record. But it, and I mean, even the emails create a possibility or a problem. Because somebody could say to them in email, an applicant say, wait a minute, that's not right. And now, now we're back into it again. And so that's why we kind of say, you know, let's not talk, but, but we all understand you have to talk to people. There, there's nothing, don't feel constrained. You, you have to talk to them. You're, it's a legislative decision you're making as elected officials. So.
And but again, we just, we want to be fair to the applicants and to our citizens and, and we want to do things the right way. So. Again, things happen, but we want to be open about it also. But again, our goal was to improve the process and, and provide, you know, a better process for, for everyone involved.
Well, what the hope was with all this front loaded stuff is that when we got to the public hearing, the applicant would have kind of known what need, they need to do and addressed everything. And so there shouldn't be any more back and forth, you know, but there's always gonna be somebody who doesn't show up to a public hearing.
Yeah. And I think that's happening, but I think again, it's just, we're, we're two months into.
You're talking about the public participation meeting and, and then they can, you can talk to people and, I mean, at that point, everybody, it ought to all be out in, in the open.
Right, right. Thank you. So, Mr. Green, thank you for your patience. We will begin with the technical report on item A. Case CUP 2105 dash 012, 1010 Marietta Road, applicant John Lloyd proposing 156 townhomes instead of 224 apartments.
Well, as Mr. Peppers expressed earlier, this technical report is just other nuts and bolts. It does not include any comments from other departments, any from the Board of Education in terms of mitigation fees that they may ask for for residential developments or any recommendations for possible conditions if you were to approve any of these applications. So the first one, the conditional use permit, 2105 dash 012, is at 1010 Marietta Road. The applicant is asking for approval of 156 townhomes. You may recall that in 2019, they were approved for 208 actually apartments. And maybe due to market changes or conditions, they are now seeing that townhomes is more viable than apartments. For zoning condition amendment 2106 dash 002 and conditional use permit 2106 dash 001, that involves the River Green subdivision. And this involves what was known as track one when the project was first approved back in 2001. And on that tract, there were residential, commercial and office uses approved. One of their requested amendments is to allow condominiums. And they are looking at putting 55 townhomes out there, 12 condos and 18,000 square feet of office and commercial space. They're also asking for a couple of other amendments to the original approval. There are some that I'm not really sure would apply, such as doing intersection improvements and so forth. Those were done during the initial construction of River Green. Once again, that report will be finalized once we get all the other staff department's comments and that will be coming to you certainly before the public hearing. The last one is RZON 2106 dash 003, MP 2106 dash 004 and CUP 2106 dash 005. That is a rezoning request, a master plan request and a conditional use permit request and all these involve the former hospital site. The property is currently zoned special use and ORT for the parcels involved. And they're asking for a PD MU zoning, which would allow for the mixed use of townhomes and apartments. It's on 17.85 acres. They're requesting 260 apartments and 50 townhomes. Another thing that's, that needs to be remembered, Hospital Drive splits the properties. And should this be approved, they will need to request an abandonment of that roadway from the city so they can construct their project. At the corner of Mary Lane and Hospital Road, there's a 1.5 acre parcel that they are sitting aside as green space. And then once again, when the staff comments come back, the technical report, staff report will be finalized and forwarded to you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Can I just make a suggestion? It may not be a good one, but instead of saying discussion, could we say technical report? Would that make it clearer to everybody?
I believe so.
Because we're really not discussing it.
Right, that's.
Is that correct? So maybe in the headings could be technical report from.
Well, on the agenda, it, it could be listed as something other than discussion for this particular meeting, as you said, because you're not talking about it. You're just getting the, the nuts and bolts. You'll, you'll discuss and talk about it during the public hearings.
Thank you. We'll certainly take a look at that for next, next agenda. So. Okay. Item B, discussion of possible actions to approve change orders for Etowah River Trail Project eastward under I-575. Ms. Watson and Mr. Ingram.
Thank you. So this is a change order for Llewellyn Construction. Currently on their contract, we have approximately $940,000 that is left from their under budget. Currently on another section of trail, we have some warranty issues with a separate contractor. So we're asking for Llewellyn to fix that problem. And that would be in the amount of $338,000, which ends up being a net change order of negative $601,000. I'm sorry, $601,000, $620.58. We're also asking for a task order for Atkins in the amount of $22,000 for construction management of that portion. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that I.
So the, there's a negative change order and then, so those two together?
Yes, ends up being a negative 600, about $600,000.
For both, like both are negative.
Oh, for.
Combined, are you, we still negative?
Of both sections of the trail? It actually ends up being closer to almost $900,000 if you have both because there is approximately $273,000 left on the other contractor's contract that will not be paid out.
So we're under budget still? I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
Yes, significantly under budget overall. We're just gonna have Llewellyn.
That's all I needed here. Just wanted to confirm that. So.
Some warranty issues. I would also ask that we, that council asks the city attorney to draft a letter for the other contractor to, to state that we no longer need their services on that section of trail.
Please. Mr. Stresses?
And is there a way to recover for the warranty work? Ah, okay. Got it.
We love negative change orders. Any other comments, questions, motions?
Do we need a motion to approve the letter? To approve the change orders and to direct the letter? Terminate the contract. So. Well, motion to approve the change orders and to terminate the contract.
Motion is seconded for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All mayors voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Watson. Good work. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, so you've approved the budget. So let's talk about next steps on the capital side. As I mentioned, we have already received the first $5.7 million of our funding. And so we will be bringing a budget amendment back to council probably next month to recognize those funds. There are some projects that we can go ahead and start before the end of this fiscal year, but remember, there's only a couple of months left in the fiscal year. So my suggestion is gonna be that we go ahead and start those things out of our $300,000 contingency that we have in our current budget. And then when we do our budget amendment, we'll, we'll work those things out. So here's the list of things that, that I'm bringing to you. $25,000 towards the creation of the Office of Housing Residential Search. Or on the search for hiring that position, which we hope to get in place before October 1st, making sure we have everything that the office will need. Another $25,000 for the Office of Economic Development Tourism, again, trying to get that position hired ahead of October 1st. $20,000 for cultural events as a grant to Canton Tourism. So that'll offset any events that they might have. $20,000 for translation services. There's some things we can go ahead. $20,000 for the Cherokee Office of Economic Development on our partnership for that economic research. $20,000 for the Cherokee Office of Economic Development for our partnership program and economic research. They're already working on their next phase of research and so we, we may want to tag team on with that contract before October. $20,000 for marketing and outreach. $10,000 to start the internship program and that $160,000 for that one-time ad pay for city employees. So we could get that done in this fiscal year. And then that would get us started on these. It may be that we don't expend those full amounts, but it would allow us to start those projects in this current fiscal year. We would go ahead and do that out of contingency and then bring a budget amendment in August to clear all of that up.
That's just what I wanted to ask. You would pay back the contingency by budget transfer. We pay back the contingency.
The contingency is in the general fund and we would.
We take the money out of contingency now, but we pay it back with the budget.
That's correct.
So we're not taking money long-term away from contingency.
That's right. We're gonna fund it out of the general fund, out of contingency right now. And then when the budget amendment goes through, any funds we spend out of contingency will write back into the ARPA funds. Does that make sense?
Yes. That's good.
I will let you know that tomorrow we will be having a press release that goes out on the budget in the middle of the night. That's already ready to go. And then as, as was noted by Mr. Weaver on the municipal fee schedule, there were a couple of concerns specific to code sections that exist in the municipal court schedule for fines. That section of the fee schedule was not changed this year. And so all of that is already in our fee schedule. But occasionally there's changes at the legislature where laws are changed and things like that. So Misfits is going through that process right now of reviewing that. Our fee schedule doesn't take effect until October 1st. So any changes that we see that need to be made, we'll bring back to you for consideration to have that fee schedule amended for that particular section. Those are all the items I have. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Peppers? Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
Thank you.
We had no counsel, counsel introduce items in the agenda approval, but just double checking. I have nothing to report this evening, other than what's been said. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for real estate. And also just remind everyone that we probably will be coming out to take a vote on a matter. We'll be coming back to the public meeting, one way or the other, according to Mr. Dyer. So.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? adjourn is to executive session. I assume we'll go to the admin room.
Upstairs?
Are we going to the mad, admin room, Billy?
Upstairs.
Somewhere else.
Really? Even this thing? Even this thing?
Did Mr. Carlin say?
Now I'll call the public station, public session back into order. Entertain a motion to amend the agenda. Tell Lou. To.
Make a motion to amend the agenda for action on purchase of property. Shoal Creek and Waleska Road.
Okay.
Close enough? That's, that's just for the, we will.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All mayors voted to amend the agenda. So now we will open discussion on that agenda item.
I, I would like for our attorney or city manager to give a formal explanation for our public so they will know what we're voting on.
Okay. Mr. Dyer?
So this is property located, it fronts on Waleska Road and also on Shoal Creek Road. It's 2.77 acres. It's the property that we would have to acquire eventually if you want to make the road improvements to improve the intersection at Waleska Road and Marietta Highway. So all of that would be, you know, extending a right turn lane and realigning Shoal Creek Road to come out across from Mary Lane. So this property is where that is located. There's been an, an agreement as to price verbally. So this would just be approving the city manager to sign the contract and to sign the closing documents to close by the end of the month. The address is 284 Shoal Creek Road.
Ms. Groo?
If we did not purchase this property, it would have to be acquired through what method to make these road improvements?
Well, we would be negotiating later with somebody perhaps having constructed something on there, which would increase the price. And if failing to reach the price, we'd have to condemn it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Or a motion? Gotcha. Mr. Carlin, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion. Motion to allow the city manager, authorize city manager to sign the contract to purchase property 284 Shoal Creek Road from Robert Bagwell and Darrell Chester for a purchase price up to $175,000. Is that almost as good as one of Brooks?
Not quite, but.
That, no, that's fine. That, that is good. Thanks.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further? A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you all. Very productive meeting, so.